To order and welcome everybody. We have minutes from May 20th.
I would move that we approve those minutes.
A second then. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Everybody turn their phones off? Okay, road encroachments. We have a road encroachments from Levi Osberg and it's for approach to a field. Alan signed it and it's requiring a culvert. It's on 8th Lane Northeast between the addresses of 568th Lane and 558th Lane.
I would love that we approve that. And second that.
Any discussion on it? Like I said, Alan's already signed it.
What was the name on it?
Levi Osberg. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. Okay, that brings us to the alcohol designation and historically we've given this whole deal to the Center for Mental Health. But last year after we've done that, Sherry Peterson from East Front Counseling called me and asked how to get involved with that. And I talked to the judge and she has been doing a lot of work here for the alcohol programs. So I talked to Sherry and I talked to Judge Rastus and we kinda came up with the idea that if we split it between East Front Counseling and Center for Mental Health 50/50, it'd probably be the right thing to do. I talked to the state and they were... They told me kinda the process to go through, so the vote at the meeting as the first step to get that done, but I think it is the right thing to do. She's supplying the services too.
And what was the name of it, East Front?
How much is our allocation?
It's a dollar a person.
Okay.
East Front Counseling.
Thank you. Is that Sherry Peterson?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, so if I have a motion on that-
I would move to split the funding between the two entities.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So that brings us to elected officials salary. We had our salary board meeting and the article in the paper explained it fairly well, I thought. And the recommendation of the salary board was a 5% increase for elected officials and $2,000 for the election official. Elections administrator. So in the way that works, the salary board makes the recommendation. We can either approve it or not approve it. If we don't approve it, then we have to reconvene the salary board.
I would move that we approve it on their recommendation. And second that.
Any further discussion? I guess the point that I was glad to see in the paper mail that we didn't get anything last year, so this is... It is a 5% increase, but it's over two years in reality, so... Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. That brings us to the Conservation District. Ross.
Well, thanks for getting me on the agenda.
Yep.
I'll give you guys just some stuff.
You don't have to be too adverbial. We already got it. I think we looked through ours yesterday.
Okay.
I thought that one picture was pretty explanatory.
Thank you, Ross.
I probably gave the one away that I had my figures on, but that's alright.
If you don't have any of this-
You can make... I can get this afterwards.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
Anyway, one of you is gonna have it on the second sheet where I wrote some notes. That's alright. Anyway. I probably got it in here. I got it here. So anyway, the Conservation District a year ago had the Upper Teton River Assessment and done at the end of July. And we had a couple consultants that came and I took them for three days and looked at various things on the river, starting at South Fork Bridge and down here to the Bellevue Bridge. And had them do a report and just different ideas and I guess what we mainly looked at was irrigation structures, manmade structures, bridges, some of the places where the river's trying to take out the road, so... Anyway, this has kinda been my baby, I guess, is the Conservation District. Cause I have to always go look at all the 3-10s and I have a lot of people asking me advice and different ideas. So I wanted somebody else's set of eyes to look at it and they were very good. I mean, they've done a lot of stuff. And they've done a lot of stuff for people with a lot of money, which isn't always the best, but they were down to earth and took a lot of... They listened to what I had to say, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. So anyway, we have a little bit of money. We got a grant to do this from the DNRC. And we have like $4,400 left on this grant that we can do something with. And we all know that you can't do much with $4,400. So I guess I, throughout the winter, looking at the report, I didn't really get any interest from any of the irrigation districts on wanting to have any help or doing anything. They pretty much take care of their own stuff. So I then started looking at stuff that affects the county road, the Teton Canyon Highway. And so I looked at two or three things there and I guess the Conservation District is wanting to help out and move forward and maybe do something, I guess, some kind of a project and it might take several years to do it. So the smallest one that I could come up with was basically the one that's just east of where the County Road Department fixed their Currie's driveway.
Yep, yep.
Where that bend is in the... I mean, another high water event. The river's gonna be there. So I guess I'm here asking for money and see if you guys have interest in having a design done by the consultant we had, Mike Sanctuary, on fixing that bend in the river with... It isn't a total armoring project. It's basically putting an armored toe and then constructing a revegetated area above it that's above the flood. But I don't know how you decide what is the flood.
Just put that off.
So anyway, and I did go up there with Alan one day and looked at it. And we looked at it. We didn't measure it off. We just kinda talked about it a little bit. And I guess at that time from his perspective, he always, he thinks of it as basically rocking the whole thing.
Like we did above it?
Right. Yeah. So I guess that's kinda where we're at and I don't know what... We either are gonna spend this money or send it back that we have left on the grant.
So is the...
And I guess what-
You're talking about like this will-sol picture on the next page? Is that kinda what he's talking about doing?
Um, something similar, I guess, but you'd have a rock toe underneath here and then you'd have this
fabric on top.
And then try to be vegetated with the old stuff like that. Soft engineering, I guess.
So, so do you have a dollar amount in mind, Ross?
Well, I guess I had Mike Sanctuary put together a budget and proposal and that's listed on the second page, but I don't want a commitment for the whole thing. I guess I'm looking at just doing the first and second part, basically having him look at it all again, survey it and then come up with a plan, I guess. So if we did that, we, it comes to $6,565 and with what we got left in the grant, there's a difference of 21, or $2,127.39. So I mean, that's basically what we're looking at, coming up with if we proceed and try to get this. And I guess the only reason, I guess the reason I'm pursuing it is if we ever wanna try to get any other kind of funding as far as grants or going forward from the DNRC or anything to try to do some of this, we pretty much have to have a plan or we have to have something to...
Well, I talked to Alan yesterday about this because we put you on the agenda. And he said that the curve is about 60 feet from the road now.
Yeah.
So he's thinking one, one big flood event, maybe two smaller ones and we'll be in the same position we were about there. So his recommendation was that we go ahead and spend the $2,000 now and it's probably gonna save us a lot of money there. It's what his thought was.
You know, I guess the, what we're seeing with, not necessarily in this area, but you get down in Bozeman and elsewhere where you have a lot more people, a lot more money, a different makeup of constituents, I guess, is... And they got a lot more people that are willing to volunteer and do this kinda stuff, but they're doing a lot of this kinda stuff and not, not just a total armament. They're doing a soft engineered approach and I guess I have my reservations too. I mean, they say it works. Sometimes it works, not always.
But basically what you're proposing would, it would be a cheaper fix now rather than a...
Yeah.
We spent a ton of money on that Currie approach for that armament used the Currie approach, so
Yeah.
It might be worth a try.
I guess I, in my mind, if we can get something put together and there's, I don't think the funding cycles, it's not gonna come for a little while to go after anything. So I guess I'm hoping Mother Nature cooperates so we can get something done. Cause I mean, you guys all know that you get that event and then you guys are under the gun.
Yeah, we've been through that experience.
Yeah.
If I could avoid that, I think it would be good.
Yeah.
So if the plan is there, it helps a lot.
Yeah, and I mean, I guess the Conservation District isn't looking to spearhead it, but I guess we're willing to try to participate in it and administer it if we have to or try to go after funding and help out that way, I guess. So I guess that's, I'm basically asking for the additional funding to get Mike to come up and make us a plan for that section road.
Well, after visiting with Alan, I think that it makes sense for the county to spend a little money now and possibly save a lot of money later on.
You know, and one thing Mike was assuming that the county would do all work and I'm not, I'm not under that assumption, I guess, cause I know the road department is about scrapped all the time. They are.
They're busy.
Yeah, I mean, they're lucky to get done what they need to get done.
Yeah, depending on what time of year. I mean, we would look at that, but you'd have to see if that worked.
Yeah.
Well, given the spiel, what do you guys?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. I think we should... Looks like a good expenditure.
You know, if we had a watershed group, which we don't, we did have, but
Yeah.
That's nonexistent.
What's the total, Ross, that we're looking at?
You guys would be looking at $2,127.39.
The price of repairing roads is not-
Oh, I know.
That's the, that's the positive part.
You know what I mean, there's... Go ahead, Dick.
Where the bend is here, did the river change channel to there or what's taken place?
It's just moving further north.
Yeah.
I mean, there's, there's several places up and down the river that I've looked at just, and I mean, I get exposed to this fixing guys' diversions.
Right.
That's where I, so I get to see a lot of these bends and in 2019, there's probably four places that I can think of where the river took out approximately 60 to 80 feet or maybe. It's heading right towards the highway.
Oh, exactly.
Yeah. I don't know. I think the river wants to go back to Hudson Bay where it used to go originally.
Well, I mean, the effect is ongoing.
You know, and I guess as you guys all know, that when that highway gets affected, we have so much traffic up there now. So many people live up there. They screen.
And the cost, the cost of working on that highway is extremely expensive, so if we can avoid that, it makes sense to me.
I mean, there's gonna be more places, but I mean, this in my mind, not that I know everything, but it's the closest one right now. And I mean, I guess I'm... I'd like to see what they come up with and maybe try this approach and see what it does.
But with funding outweighs, you know, even if we apply and it's accepted.
Yeah, it takes-
It's gonna take a little while.
Yeah. Yep.
So you need a motion, Joe?
Yep, I need a motion.
Well, I would move to fund the $2,100 some dollars to get this survey and study completed, let Ross's work done, so...
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, Ross. I really think that this is gonna
Yeah.
Have the chance of saving this money because we know the river's gonna keep doing what it's doing.
Yeah.
Ross, can you get Nancy to send me like an invoice?
Yeah, I'll have Nancy get in touch with you and cause I'll see what to-
How soon do you need this phone, these funds?
Um-
This fiscal year?
Which would be better for you guys, I guess.
I think it would be better to do it this year just because we had a motion to do this year, so we're gonna do a final claim run the last week of June, so...
I'll, I'll have Nancy get in touch with you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you guys.
Yeah, thanks, Ross. We appreciate it.
Joe, would this come out of the road department budget or pilted or?
Probably pilted.
Pilted, okay, yeah.
Their budget's pretty well strapped.
Trying to be proactive, I think, is a lot better than-
Well-
Reactive.
Alright.
Well, thanks, Ross.
Yep.
Sweetgrass Development is up next.
Hello.
Come on in.
Sweet part of us. See Mr. Can't Get Shelled Here.
I'm not sure.
I know, but, um, so I would love to chat with you, probably not today, but at a later time about some of the ARPA funding stuff. I'm sure you've watched all of the vast quantities of webinars that there are, but make sure you use those competitive funds, especially if you're able to build that ambulance, take that to get more funds to be able to do that. If you can do that, that's, and those funds match in the competitive side too, so that's a huge, huge deal. But I have a whole group of people in the hallway. I'm sorry we're noisy. It is the, I'm gonna say this wrong, Karukowski Distillery.
How do you spell that?
K-A-R-H-U space K-O-S-K-I Distillery. And Joe, these are the ones that you had talked about and we had talked about a while ago.
John Gordon?
Yep, we just submitted a planning grant, so gentlemen. Well, okay, so I brought my staff too, so you can meet them. This is Sean McGuire. He's our executive assistant. This is Corey Hegeman. He's our regional director and you'll be seeing a lot more of these two because then we can all attend every meeting in the world, um, so Dick's laughing at me. And this is Joel. I'll let him introduce himself and give a little bit... Are you hiding?
No.
Let everybody rotate, rotate faces here.
Um, and I will let him give a little overview of his project and talk about everybody that's going to be involved and all of that.
Thank you, thank you. Well, good morning, everybody. My name's Joel Almeida and I have land with my uncle right over off of Gordon Road. It is technically in Teton County. Our property borders Cascade to the south and to to the east and, but we are completely in Teton County. My family has a long history here. My great-grandfather immigrated from Finland back in 1908, homesteaded the land out there. It's been in my family continuously since then. My plan, as I'm sure you've all heard, is to open a distillery out there where we will distill local grains and create vodka, gin and whiskeys for export out of the state. Obviously keep some in the state for everybody to enjoy, but become a primary sector business and try to bring some tourism, bring some employment opportunities into the county. This is Brad Daniel, my CFO. We have, we've assembled a really, really quality team and I'm happy to share all those details with you later, who they are and why I believe they're important into, into the overall organization. But we're really excited. I'll be moving back up here from California, so my personal history is my mother was born and raised in Great Falls. She went to Great Falls High School. My father was stationed at Malmstrom. They met at Howard's Pizza, got married at St. Anne's. And then when my father got shipped overseas to Turkey, my mom decided to try, try living in Southern California for a while. It's escaped the winters, I think. She was, she was ready to get out of the cold. When my dad got back from Turkey, they stayed in California, so I spent all my school years, the school months, excuse me, school months in California and spent all of my summers up on the farm. So Great Falls, Vaughn, the whole area is very near and dear to my heart and my older son will be a junior at UC Santa Barbara in the fall and my younger son will be a senior in high school. And after he graduates from high school, I'll be moving up here permanently. So I'm spending about half my time up here right now and I'll be moving up full-time when, when this project is, is off the ground and running, so. And from a timing perspective, we're hoping to break ground in September and then it will take about nine months to build. And so we're looking hopefully at having product rolling off, rolling off the shelves by July 4th of next year. That's kind of the plan.
We're going to go and connect him with Paul.
Good.
Which is, you know, imperative, so...
And I have a question. You've talked to Austin Boyer or Sanitary?
I talked to him briefly months ago and let him know what was going on, what was happening and he said, hey, as you get closer, as you get the plans, which we have now, let's reengage and have a conversation. So that's part of why we're all up here now. I wanted to introduce myself to everybody and and make sure that I'm having the proper conversations with everybody and making sure all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed and make sure we do everything by the book.
Yeah, I'm not sure Austin is in, but he's in the same building as Falls.
Okay.
Okay, great.
We're excited to get new business in the county. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm very excited. You know, I brought some cards. I'd be happy to pass those out to everybody just so you guys, you guys can contact me if you, directly if you have any questions or-
Thank you.
Well, and there is another project happening in power and they've actually been in communications with Ryan Fifeley too, so everybody's, we're trying to make sure everyone's connected to make sure there's no hiccups. I mean, there's always hiccups, but to get everything-
I had dinner with Ryan last night and we compared notes and talked a lot about how our projects could help each other and and we can work together and really try to benefit each other, the community, um, you know, and the county in general. So if you have any questions, feel free to email me, text me. Always happy to answer anything.
How large a volume are you considering?
Pretty large. We're gonna-
Drawings are beautiful.
Yeah, we're happy to share with you the, you know, the schematics and the drawings if you haven't seen them. We're looking to build a 10,000-foot facility, just our main production plan out there and then we'll have another probably 6,000-foot storage facility for, for barreling. So we're gonna, we'll be putting out, what would you say from a case perspective? Remember those numbers that Brian shared with us?
That's a lot.
It's a, it's a significant amount. It will be more than any other distillery in the state.
How many employees are you looking at having?
We'll probably have upwards of 20 employees.
Oh, okay.
Does that type of operation use much water?
Yes. Yeah, so we've already been in touch with a gentleman out of Helena. I'm blanking on his name right now regarding, regarding all the hydrology and according to his information, we're allocated 50 gallons of water a day out there. We're only gonna need about 12, 12,000 gallons a day. We're gonna run what's called a closed-loop system, so the water will come in, cool everything and then go right back in. So we're really using it mostly for cooling.
I guess the water gets to be an issue in this area.
Sure, absolutely. And that's why we're running a closed-loop system, so that we take the water in, some of it obviously we need, we need for the distillation process, but then also most of it, we're just gonna funnel right back in.
Great.
And the water issue is important too. I mean, if there are any little local sticking points like that, bring them up.
Yeah.
Because we're in the planning stage and it's setting up systems like that to accommodate for things like that. We can build those in.
Yep. And then we've been, as far as the electrical grid, we've been in touch with Sun River Co-op and with Northwest and from what we're now discovering, even though the land is technically Sun River, because it's a commercial project, we may have to go with with Northwest because we need three-phase power. So we're trying to work through that with the two, with the two organizations to see exactly who, who's gonna supply us the power. And we have an electrical engineer on, on our team, so he works for Southern California Edison in his day job. And so he's helping us process through and communicate appropriately.
They're using Little Paige Warner out of Great Falls, Tim Peterson, who's done tons of projects and things, so all of the architecture's being done locally too.
Just trying to see if we, we've got a lot of renderings here, but I want to just show you this one.
He just brings them around along the paperwork.
It was easy.
So this is basically what the building will look like. So that's the main building there and then we'll have a secondary building there. So main building right here.
Okay.
And then a secondary building there. And I'm happy to send these, these pictures
Sure.
to everybody to see. So the main building and then a secondary storage facility over there. So. So we're real excited about, about, we're excited about the project. The employment, I think, is gonna be great coming into the community. We're looking to pay higher than average wages to our employees. I think that's important. I wanna create a good quality of life for the people who work for us. It's real important to me. Create the right culture.
So I have a question on access.
Yes.
Down, you're down in the bottom, right? Or close?
No, sir, we're, we're at the top. So right, there's a missile silo right there on Gordon Road. We're right across from the missile silo up, up top.
Okay, so what, which road will you have the most traffic on?
Gordon Road.
The down through the bottom?
Right.
Okay.
Yep. We could also come up to Dracket Hill, come up the other side off of two hundred right by.
Yeah, I mean, that, that was the reason I was asking.
Yeah, you could come.
Where the pressure's gonna be.
Yeah, so if you're, you know, if you're coming from Missoula and Lincoln, you can, you can take the Dracket Hill Road for exit. If you're coming off the fifteen, you'll wanna get on the frontage road and turn, turn left at the top of the hill. Um, or if you're coming from, from Power, you just, you know, you can have a power exit as well. So those are some things that we'll want to, out down the road, signage, advertising, how can we make sure people know where we're at? Because, you know, we're not right off the, right off the highway. We're gonna be in a little ways, we're gonna need to, to share with people how to get to us, um, and, you know, we want people to come visit. We want people coming from Canada to stop. And, and, you know, they've been driving for maybe a few hours, they need a break, they wanna grab lunch, they wanna check out something unique and different. You know, we wanna make sure that they have the proper signage to come visit us.
And I, I guess I'm, is there a testing or tasting room and all that also?
Yes, there'll be a tasting room. Yep, there'll be a tasting room, we'll have a, we'll have a, uh, we'd like to have a kitchen in there to be able to serve food as well. Uh, make it a destination so that people can come, spend the afternoon. Uh, you only get two drinks, right? So we've gotta keep that limited. You can buy two bottles, or you can have two drinks, but if people wanna come, buy, buy a bottle or two and stay for the day, and we'll have fire pits and, uh, buy food. We wanna be able to, you know, create a space where people can come and relax and, and enjoy. We've got some nice views off the Cooley, you can see Square Butte from where we're at.
Sure.
So wanna make sure that we create, uh, create a safe space and a fun space for people to come and enjoy the day.
Well, it's very interesting. I, I, I just want to encourage you to visit with Austin so that.
Absolutely.
There's no hiccups starting and finishing it.
Right, I appreciate that, thank you.
And this is Paul Wick. We didn't even have to track him down.
Oh, perfect.
He is the other one we need to chat with. We talk about you and you up here. If you have a few minutes after this.
I do.
Wonderful. I'm trying to get with. Okay, do we have any further questions for Joel?
There's no, um, countywide zoning that in any way applies to this, right?
There's none.
So it's just that regulatory, from the county's perspective, would be Paul as the planner and Austin as the sanitary.
And the state regulations.
Yeah.
We, we get calls from people and they wanna know what are the zoning, and when we tell them we don't have any, they, they want it in writing. We don't have any, we refer to the state on that.
Most counties do. I think Cascade's the only one that's got.
The bigger, bigger counties.
Very stringent.
Yeah.
Well, we certainly appreciate you coming in.
Thank you all very much, appreciate your time, Jack. Thank you. Look forward to seeing you all out there at some point.
Yeah, absolutely.
The grand.
The grand opening. We'll have a, we'll have a county meeting, county commissioner meeting.
We have a board meeting next week too. Sammy, we have a board meeting next week in Conrad.
I've got it on my calendar. Since it's close and it's daytime, I'll be there.
Well, and, um, Director Osterman at the Department of Commerce will be there.
Okay.
So we're planning on trying to get a little more ARPA information and some things like that from him. He doesn't know that yet, but.
Good luck with that.
Oh, we're getting information, what we're getting, I'm not.
Encouraged about?
No.
Yes, yep.
But we'll try.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you all very much. Have a great day.
Next up is commission reports. We did go to the Mainland District meeting, talk about ARPA for five hours. We go from Monday, but Dave was at the tenth.
Yeah.
And it's gonna be a frustrating process, but we'll get through it somehow. That's all I have for commission reports. You guys have anything?
Uh, no, it's pretty well covered.
Public comment?
If you need any help with the ARPA stuff, um, economic development entities and some of the others are going to be well versed in how to meander through, um, we've attended all those meetings and every single training and I'm having conversations literally early, early in the morning and late, late at night with a lot of the people involved.
So you understand the whole program?
I actually can have an intelligent conversation with Anna Miller and Autumn Coleman, and I can get through that. As soon as Treasury gives the rest of the. Nope, they haven't given the final, and that's truly what a lot of it is waiting on. But as far as infrastructure goes, we've got a pretty good handle on it. And they're going, they're, they have, um, the notice out right now, um, for engineering for ARPA to help entities that may need it. I got the solic, I received the solicitation, um, information yesterday on that, but I don't know who they're going to get. Every engineering firm is up to here with all their clients and working on ARPA, so, um.
Yeah, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a monumental headache.
So Mako said it's still, I think the comment period is open till July, and Mako would really encourage people to make comments to extend the deadlines, because there's no way in two years can we get this project even started and to be completed by December thirty-first to two thousand twenty-six. You can't even get an engineer, you can't get a, so comments to extend the deadlines would help a lot.
Yeah, and I'm not sure if that came from Treasury or the state. I can't remember. I read that a while ago, but.
No, this is, this is Treasury.
And I think the state just used the same deadlines.
Yeah, the state.
They use the same deadlines, but the ARPA, the Treasury one is the one that's the comment period.
If they could move it like two years to six and eight would make more sense, but I'm sure the administration is looking at, you know.
We've talked to Tester's office as well, and Caitlin said that they're hearing that from everybody, so.
Yep.
Time will tell.
I had that conversation with Robin Baker at the Grizzly meeting the other night too, and like, you've got to extend this, this, I mean.
It's just not gonna be workable.
No, well, you've big Montana, how many engineers do we have in the state of Montana? It's a little different than the, than the state of California or the state of Texas. I mean, they've got to look, they've gotta help a little bit.
Exactly.
And they don't even know what to, what they're gonna do or what they're gonna require yet. They haven't given us finals, so every, every month that they keep putting this off, it just gets harder and harder to comply.
Well, and they have such quick deadlines with the legislature too, that now, um, the, business stabilization meeting was supposed to be today, so I was gonna send everybody out here and I was going to attend in Helena, but then I heard it was going to be the twenty-ninth, and now I've heard July twenty-ninth, so I have no idea. But soon as I get any more great details, I will get it out to you. There's another infrastructure meeting the twenty-eighth, so we'll have some more information, so if you need any help. Some of the way you can make those monies matches is really good. I mean, nothing ventured, nothing gained. I'm one of those people.
If you can make your project fit the parameters, it's the issue.
Yep, exactly.
Yep.
That's exactly it. And here's my push, Power needs a little money to be able to do their match for your allocation if, uh, their sewer is not good, and they're going to be applying for some ARPA funding too.
We heard that from our representative.
I'm just going to reiterate just a little bit as I look at the books. So, and we have that, the contracts all signed, we're all good. You'll be getting, um, Paula, I will be sending you the informations for the claim for the hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
Okay.
And if you need to do any more administrative for this year, we could do that drawdown too.
All right, thank you.
You betcha.
We'll be in touch.
Fantastic. And if you wanna come to the meeting and, General Director Osterman, since Commerce is involved with, um.
And that's what day was that?
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Next Wednesday at two in Conrad. Um, and I think we may, we will try to have it via Zoom too, if you can't make it, so, I will, we're sending you, I have the final press release in my email, so we'll have that, because, I mean, it's a hard time of year for people to get away and all of that too, so. You can always send me questions to ask, so.
Public comment, Ross, you got any public comment?
Well, there's a couple things, uh, uh, Mr. Chair is, uh, I need to get with our road supervisor, Alan, uh, see if we can make a plan out to, uh, take out divots in our main street there somehow, and I know it's been talked about before, I just need to help him along if I can, for some way we can put a plan together. We're going through the, uh, on a water project, we're going through the assessment process to find out which slots are potentially buildable, accessible, uh, to be accessed, since after what we were forced into on the, uh, loan arrangement with RD. So we've been surveying town and finding out that the district is not totally defined by the Department of Revenue and, so I guess I'll have to end up in Shelby or Helena to figure out what and how they define Power. So we're, we're struggling along, coming along, like Sarah says, we have made some agreements and signed some paperwork. Um, I'm gonna say that the estimated, after we get going by next year, we'll probably be lucky. I don't know if we'll get it completed next year. Uh, obviously, you've heard what engineer or the materials and construction companies are gonna be bogged down for two years or better. So what we thought was just laying a little pipe has turned out to be building the Empire State Building. Everybody's faced with the same thing. Um, so having said that, Power's still jumping along. Obviously, you heard the other distillery that wants to come into Power. I don't know how that's all gonna work, but, uh, we're, we're anxious to see how our local boy can establish himself as well, help the Power economy, and with the advent of new water, hopefully we can build Power up where we keep the school alive, so it's kind of a report from Power.
Any further public comment?
I got a question. Is the Air Force working on the Bellevue Road this summer?
Yes.
Really?
Yeah, and we've talked to Alan, we really, we've gotta get that culvered in at the base of Bird Hill before that happens. I don't remember the start date, but it's kinda later in the summer.
August sometime.
Is it?
Which, after our first debacle on the Bellevue Road, I was hoping that they would learn their lesson and not start so late.
Yeah.
But. So, yeah, we still have to get that culvered in at the bottom of Bird Hill. Any further public comment? Okay, our next meeting is July fifteenth. We're adjourned. Thank everyone for coming.